The Columbus City Council meeting for January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcon. Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Tobolinski.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Polinsky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to address the council, we'd ask that you please come forward to the podium. We'd ask that you give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the January sixth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting. Item four B, changing the date of the second meeting in February of two thousand twenty-five to Tuesday, February eighteenth, at six P M. due to Presidents' Day. Item four C, reappointments of Joe Marksmeyer and Melissa Spearman to the Downtown Business Improvement Board for three-year terms. Item four D, resolution number R two-five dash zero-three approving the request of the Antique Tractor and Gas Engine Show to camp overnight in Pawnee Park Friday and Saturday, June sixth and seventh of two thousand twenty-five. The Board of Park Commissioners recommends approval. Item four E, resolution number R two-five dash zero-four approving the memorandum of understanding with the Columbus Realty Holdings LLC for coordination of construction improvements and reimbursable costs on Thirty-Fifth Avenue between Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Sixth Streets for Concrete Paving Improvements twenty twenty-five project. Item four F, resolution number R two-five dash oh-five approving the agreement with Mike's Towing for towing services. Item four G, resolution number R two-five dash oh-six approving the agreement with Balin Towing LLC for towing services. Item four H, resolution number R two-five dash zero-seven authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four I, finance department reports, and item four J, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to special presentations. This evening is, it is time for the annual State of the State address. So I ask you all to bear with me for a few minutes. As two thousand twenty-five begins, it's custom to look back on what we have accomplished in the previous year and then to look forward to those things that we plan on seeing occur in the coming year and we believe will have a significant impact on our community. As I lead our community, I must remember the fundamental role that city government provides. That is providing those essential services that our citizens expect. This covers everything from remaining safe with adequate police, fire, EMS services, reliable public works, water and sewer services at reasonable rates, well-maintained streets, repaired streets, which include handling all those issues that Mother Nature can throw at us. Along with all of these essential services that our city provides, we are also charged with providing an array of amenities that help create a better quality of life in our community. This array of amenities can be endless. The continued growth of our Parks and Rec Department that oversees so much of this. Our green space is second to none when compared to other communities. The golf courses, soccer fields, baseball softball fields, the plunge, the aquatic center, tennis pickleball courts, the walking trails, and so much more. Most citizens expect some or all of this, and it's our responsibility to be smart about how we can provide it. The city mission statement says it all. "Aiming to safeguard our thriving and inclusive community and enhance opportunities for a high quality of life, sustainable progress, and a vibrant and secure future for all." Our community continues to grow. We are becoming more of a regional destination. Our industrial partners are thriving and many are expanding. We have new businesses constantly looking at Columbus. Our healthcare facilities are bringing people into town, and people come to Columbus to shop. All of this helps support our community, but at the same time puts pressure on our services. This year's budget of ninety-two million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars reflects the staff and council's recognition of the current economic environment. We were able to lower our property tax levy for the second year in a row, taking the levy from point two-nine-two-six-one-eight down to point two-nine-one-two-oh-three. This minimal reduction is significant when you consider that the city is growing, and with this growth comes increased needs in city services. We must remember, growth is good, but growth comes with a cost. Minimizing spending and watching all expenses is our goal. Attempting to rely less on property tax revenue has been an ongoing priority. Keep in mind, of all the property tax that you pay, the city receives only sixteen percent. That is correct. Sixteen dollars out of every one hundred. And that sixteen percent helps fund those city services that you have come to expect. Our voter-approved sales taxes are doing well. The one percent, which was approved by the voters and designated to cover capital improvements. Capital improvements cover everything from police, fire, EMS needs, water, and street department needs, helping provide many of the array of amenities that I have talked about, and much more. The half-cent sales tax was voter-approved to pay for the police and fire facilities, including the Charlie Lewis update, taking us to twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five, and also funding economic development up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what did we accomplish in two thousand twenty-four? We continued our partnership with the state of Nebraska on the reconstruction of Twenty-third Street. This three-year state-sponsored project has provided all of us with some headaches, but we can see that the end is in sight, and I think most of us would agree the finished product looks pretty good. We approved and are moving forward with a major upgrade and expansion for our water utility. This sixty-million-plus-dollar project over the next ten years will ensure that we can better serve our citizens and accommodate new industry and continued growth. The council took a major step in attempting to address our need for housing with the use of discretionary tax dollars to jumpstart the Vitality Village subdivision, providing over three hundred doors for our community when this is completed. This project is one of many new housing developments. More housing is underway in the new development south of Centennial Park, by Menards with the addition going on at the Flats on Fifth, the just-approved apartment south of Highland Park Church. And what is exciting, many of these new developments have brought in new developers. That's correct. Contrary to what some might say, we welcome new developers and builders, and they do and are coming to town. We continue to support the needs of police, fire, EMS, and E nine-one-one, which included the Charlie Lewis staffing for twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five. Besides the major project for our water utility, we continue to support the needs of our wastewater, stormwater, and transfer station. All of these are vital essentials. In Parks and Rec, we completed the Gerard Park Pickle and Tennis Ball Courts. The Centennial Park restroom concession building reconstruction got underway. We began the installation of artificial turf at Pawnee Park Legion Field. This has to be noted as a great collaboration of public and private financing, with funding being combined to make this happen, city funds and private donations. Major arterial and collector roadways were reconstructed, providing safer and better traffic flow through the community. We completed the Lost Creek Parkway and Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line and Water Transmission Line, which will further open this corridor to development. Our commitment to transparency and openness continues. Our communication director is constantly updating citizens on what is happening. We initiated our coffee talks, and will continue to get ourselves in front of the public. And with all of this, I must remind the public. You can put out all the information, but we cannot force the public to digest it. They must reach out and want to know what is going on. Our library continues to shine and grow in the services offered to the public. The public acceptance of our new community building has been overwhelming, and what an asset to our community. I constantly hear from individuals that visit Columbus that we did this right. And regarding our community building and other recent buildings, I have heard some say that they are extravagant, palatial, over-the-top. I stand here to challenge that. We built functional and long-lasting facilities that our citizens can be proud of. And what's more important, what we did, we put in front of the voters and explained everything to them, and the voters overwhelmingly approved our projects. You have to love those that like to speak up after the fact. We continue our efforts to develop and revitalize our downtown. What is going on in Columbus is not unique. Many similar cities face the same challenges. We are all attempting to find those elements to succeed and create a thriving environment. To those that like to whine and constantly complain, I'll borrow a statement made by Josh Moaning, the former mayor of Norfolk. Quote, "Community development is intentional, deliberate, and careful work. It requires vision, partnership, planning, and patience. It involves much more effort than simplistic sloganeering and political pandering. It is more rewarding, constructive, and healthy to build something up than it is to tear it down." And finally, although not city projects, we welcome the opening of Harris Casino and Racetrack with the first season of thoroughbred racing on the track, and we welcome the house, Columbus Community Hospital's awesome field house. These both are huge additions to our community. What can we expect in two thousand twenty-five? Well, everybody can clap and applaud the completion of Twenty-third Street reconstruction. But then we will begin the replacement and renovation of the U.S. Highway thirty-eighty-one Loop River Bridge. Bridges. This is scheduled to begin late this year and then into next year. A state-sponsored project that is expected to take three years. This project will remove and renovate the South Bridge and repair and renovate the Northbound Bridge. We will continue addressing our needs for housing and working with developers and local builders. We will begin a trial paper recycling program collaborating with Keep Columbus Beautiful, establishing a paper drop-off location at our city grass stump area. The installation and reconfiguration of traffic signals on the Parkway at Forty-eighth Avenue, Thirty-third Avenue, and upgrades at Eighteenth Avenue. We will continue to work on our water utility upgrades. We will see the completion of the Pawnee Park Legion Field Artificial Turf, East and West Pawnee Park Shelter Roof Replacements. We will continue street rehabilitation and maintenance, continued an expansion of our trail system. We have major lift station repair and improvements to address older systems that need replacement and upgrades to address our growth. Continued strong support for police, fire, EMS, and nine-one-one needs. Continue annual street maintenance and rehabilitation, and so much more. And let me add that you can be proud of the city team that leads the charge on all of what I just laid out. We are fortunate to have exceptional leadership that is willing to go the extra mile doing what is in Columbus's best interests. And finally, on a personal note, with the approval of our voters, I have the opportunity to continue to serve as your mayor and work with all of you to continue to make Columbus that awesome place for people to come visit and live. I can assure you, the state of our city is good. All right, we'll move on to...
Public hearings.
Public hearings.
Public hearings. Item seven A, public hearing for the Citizen Advisory Review Committee Report of Activities in accordance with the Columbus Economic Development Plan.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move that public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing, application from Kay Herman Development LLC to rezone property at forty-seventy-five Thirty-third Avenue, located east of Thirty-third Avenue between Fortieth and Forty-second Street from R one Single Family Residential District to B two General Commercial District and to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Yes, sir. Please, come forward.
My name is Keith Evans. I live at thirty-nine eighty-one Lost Creek Drive. That is south of this location. I'm not good at speaking, so bear with me, guys. Better?
Yeah, very good.
Okay. I want to thank you guys for hearing our concerns about changing these zones. Okay? I would like to start out with a bit of history of my life here in Columbus. I've been in this location for over forty-five years, and I have worked with the Shea for forty-four years. I would like, I mean, I had the honor of living in several locations of Columbus, Nebraska. Nineteen ninety-five to two thousand four, I lived and rented a house at twenty-four Thirteen Thirty Street, a nice quiet residential area with the following schools. Emmanuel Lutheran School to the west, North Park Elementary to the north, and Columbus Community High School to the south. In two thousand four to two thousand eleven, we bought a home at twenty, excuse me, at nineteen oh-four Fifteenth Street. It was a busy street, but still a quiet residential area. The following schools to the east was Scotus High School and Saint Bonds Elementary. In two thousand eleven, we bought the home at thirty-nine eighty-one Lost Creek Drive, now where we live. It was a home that was designed by me for my father-in-law, who retired from Omaha, to this location. In two thousand eleven, he passed away. We bought the house. This is a quiet residential area, and it has had at that time only Lost Creek School Elementary. But in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, the Columbus High School followed us to this location. So now we have the Columbus High School again in our location. This brings me to the reason I'm at this meeting and I was at the present meeting. It is the safety of our community that this zoning, these zones do not change from residential to commercial. We have two schools there, this location, already. Days before the meeting, we found out that the city, or whatever the zoning was, let me get back to my notes here, please. Forgive me. Several of the, I'm a little nervous on this part. Days before the meeting, I found that the change of the zoning would allow apartments to be built in this area. I have nothing against the city growing for this, but apartments take up a lot, I mean, they bring in a lot... they bring in a lot more area. We found that they are looking at 122-bedroom apartments with garages, plus they're adding storage units to the far east, which the letter only said to us as storage units. We did not know about the apartments until just before the meeting. This is adding at least 120-plus-plus cars coming and going to a location that is a quarter of the size of the neighborhood to the south, in an already, we mean, only having access to 33rd Avenue. I'm still a little nervous on this, guys, bear with me. The neighborhood south of that area is set up about 80 homes with one church. It has two exits to 33rd Avenue with one exit to 38th Street. This will increase the traffic in an already congested area and streets, location. Many of the drivers that come and go from the school seek a faster and, a faster way to avoid the gridlock of 33rd Avenue by going through our neighborhood. And to say, most of the drivers do not follow the speed limit for a residential area. For the meeting tonight, I would like to raise the concerns about the changing of these zones in the commercial again. I think the city planning should rethink, and I think the city council should take a closer look at this request for the following reasons. Traffic is, yes, our main concern. We have two schools, elementary and high school. We have a walking path. We have hospital traffic, healthcare clinics. We have senior citizens with assist living, nursing home, and driving to these clinics, wellness, field track, a fieldhouse, and the YMCA traffic, and our residential traffic. Three major intersections are affected by this area, 33rd Avenue and Lost Creek Parkway. I know the city has already planned on helping to relieve the problem already. We go back to 33rd Avenue and 38th Street, we have 38th Street and 48th Avenue. There have been more intersections affected with school starting and dismissing, making any left-hand turn almost impossible and timely and not safe. Emergency vehicles that come to our area for our healthcare system. And at note, I like to say that 33rd Avenue is already posted as a non-truck area. The future, this is, and that's why I'm asking the city and what their plans are for the area east of 33rd Avenue, west of 18th Avenue, and north of 38th Street. This location is zoned as the following: Columbus Community Authority, this holds our complex for our soccer area, residential area, agriculture, which these should stay either as residential or move to residential agriculture. We have industrial there, dual lift, that is already bursting at the scene, and a very small commercial zone where Bossman's gas station is and a few small lots there. West of 33rd Avenue, we have the properties of the YMCA, east of the YMCA that the hospital owns, so we don't know what's going to happen there, and we have the school that we don't know what they're going to do with the area south of the school. But I'm sure, and we also have the additions of the future of our schools. We need to, you know, look at that area, too. I'm not sure, but I'm sure this will add more traffic to an already consisted area. In some of the other locations in Columbus, usually, commercial zoning is not present around schools. You would find that mostly residential zones keeps the traffic and reduce the lower speed for safety. As I have experienced living in Columbus, in my introduction, I have noted that. So I would like to close and ask the City Planning Commission and the City Council to think about this request before changing zones now and in the future to commercial in this area. As our city logo quotes, "City of power and progress," is great, but should not sacrifice the safety of our children, our schoolchildren, our residents, and many of the other Columbus community citizens that drive to this location to use the great facilities here. I would again like to thank you for your time and our concerns for changing. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Evans?
I do.
Yes, sir.
The paperwork that we have says that they're going to build 100 two-bedroom units, and you mentioned 120.
We heard 120.
Well, and this is just the zoning, it's not platting yet.
It's not platted yet, no.
My question and my concerns is, is if we changed this zone to commercial, what happens if it went north of Bossman's? What happens to the agricultural deal? Does that all get changed to commercial, too? There's no plan, and that's what I'm saying. We've already got a congested area here. We need to watch out and not make a change. That's my concern.
And the number they were using at the hearing was 122, 120?
120, that's what I heard.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak against this public hearing?
Good evening, my name is Sue Reekman, and I live at 3204 40th Street, and we have been there almost 40 years. So we have seen a lot of growth in this area. I agree with Mr. Mayor, growth is good, but one thing that wasn't brought up tonight, where the pump and pantry is also straight south of there, is going to be a Dollar General. So that's another thing that's going to bring more traffic to the area. It's not just bad, the traffic when school gets out, it is horrendous. We don't leave the neighborhood between 7:30 and 8:15, and we don't leave between 3:30 and 4 o'clock. You just can't get in and out of the neighborhood. People are racing through the neighborhood, they're leaving the high school, they're coming, they're making left turns to the neighborhood. Then there's three roads that head south, they'll take any three of the roads. We've had, we called the police department to ask for extra patrol around there, we were told that's not going to happen, and that's when I got upset, and I said, well, when will my granddaughters get killed by these racers through the neighborhood? That's when people are going to show up. There's a crosswalk there that you push the button. My granddaughters and I did an experiment one day, we sat there for five minutes, every time the light went out, we pushed the button. We counted 17 cars that went by, not one stopped. So the main thing we're worried about is the safety issue, and it's not just when school is letting out, it's all the time. When 23rd Street is closed for construction, people I know from anywhere south are coming up 33rd Avenue to take the bypass or the arterial to get where they're going. It's with 120 buildings, and I think, Mr. Barr, that's what you asked about, that's what they told us at the planning committee last week, that there was going to be 120, not 100. So that's probably 120 more cars with one exit to 33rd. And if there's three lanes there, one going south, one north, and there's a turning lane, I can guarantee if that traffic's backed up, they're going to turn right into our neighborhood. So we're worried about the safety of the children walking from Lost Creek. I'm sure these children that live in these apartments will be going to Lost Creek or the high school. They'll have to get to Emmanuel, the churches. I myself go to the Y, and instead of being able to cross the street with so much traffic at different times of day, I've had to go all the way around to the roundabout and come back on the other side. So it's the traffic and the safety are the main things that we're worried about. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak against this public hearing?
Good evening, Crystal Minkie, 3968 30th Avenue, Columbus, Nebraska. And I guess I'm a newbie in the neighborhood, we've only been there 24 years. I do want to just have an opportunity to first thank from those last week from the zoning board that did vote no. I know that's not this audience, but I want to go on public record, for those that did vote no last week, we appreciate you listening to us, and we appreciate the concerns that we brought, and that unfortunately, it wasn't enough because it's in front of you this week. And secondly, I just want to do a show of hands of, because not everybody's going to get up and talk today, I want to do a show of hands, everybody that is here tonight, against this rezoning. So if everybody would please raise your hands that you're against the rezoning. So we've worked really hard to communicate our neighbor, communicate with our neighbors because the notice of hearing was very vague, and so we have, as the mayor said, we have taken upon ourselves to educate ourselves and to learn and to do our part as, I'll say, as taxpayers of the community. So the one thing of note that I did ask was, when was the last time a traffic study was done? And I do appreciate the city engineering department did share with me that the last traffic study that was done on the 38th Street and 33rd Avenue corridor was when Columbus Public Schools commissioned the traffic study back in 2012 and 2013. It's a little bit difficult for me to believe that that traffic study is still applicable today with all that has changed. Actually, I didn't even know about the apartments about Highland Evangelical Church, so that's also on 38th Street. I don't know how many apartments that will be, but that means additional traffic. So that would be my question to the council members as to, why would a traffic study from 12 years ago with all that's changed be applicable with all the traffic congestion that's causing a public safety concern for our neighbors?
Well, I don't have an exact answer for you, Crystal, but I do, I do think I can speak to that study that tried to look forward and did take into account growth, and it did lay out specific growth that could happen. You know, this particular piece of ground could handle, and I think they used 60 single-family homes.
We would love 60 single-family homes. We would love if Jason Schmid and the Shelby Lumber would build, and nobody is against that.
But I mean, 60, 60 homes compared to 100 or 120 apartments, you know, you're still going to have the congestion, some congestion and some, and some, you know, traffic and other issues. The, you know, the storage unit side of this would be minimal traffic. I mean, when you go by storage units, you might see a vehicle, you go by again, there's another vehicle. The storage units cannot be part of the concern, I believe, when you, when you think of this. I mean, in most cases, storage units are just for that. I take my patio furniture over there in the fall and store it, and I go back and get it in the spring. You know, we do initiate traffic studies at times when dollars are required for, for building and expansion, and there just hasn't been the need because of what we've been able to rely on. 33rd Avenue was built as an arterial to support the growth that we believe, and the study said, could develop there.
So yes, there was the no of that they are forward-looking, but I don't know anybody today that can look forward 12 years and tell me with confidence that a traffic study 12 years ago was that good to predict the future. If that was the case, why would we need AI?
Well, but Crystal, for how many years did that field sit empty? I mean, you can't gauge something totally...
I'm not just saying that field, I'm saying the area. I said 38th Street and...
And I also heard the concern about what will develop along the Parkway or, I mean, our community is growing, and that growth will go predominantly north and west because you don't grow toward a river, and that's what's south of us, so you're going to grow north and west as the community grows.
So am I hearing that nobody has any concern of public safety with the traffic congestion?
No, you're not hearing that nobody has concerns about public safety. We are hearing what you're saying, and we will talk to the police, and we will talk about doing a better job of what you're bringing up. I mean, I'm not there, so I can't tell you that the crosswalks aren't being, you know, being used properly. So we need to hear that. I apologize if you've called and not gotten any kind of response. I mean, you know, usually, though, you'll call 911, that, that is not talking directly to a police officer, you know? And I'm sure they're trying to relate that there's a concern, and how that ends up getting to a police officer, I don't know. But you're not hearing anybody here say they're not concerned about public safety.
And does traffic congestion result in public safety concerns? Most of these drivers are young drivers. Most of these drivers, so on Thursday last week, a neighbor, Terry and Judy Belson, were not able to attend tonight, 32 cars from the high school took the short route, alternative route. I understand you can't tell people where to go, but 32 cars just in that short period of time as they were standing there took the short alternative route speeding through our neighborhood. So when it's us experiencing that, when it's us experiencing the traffic congestion, we do and are taking an active interest tonight to voice our concerns. Thank you.
Any questions for Crystal?
Just, what would it take for us to consider a traffic study?
Typically, and Rick, I don't know if you want to answer this or you want me to, but typically, when there's a major development happening, there either needs to have been one within, you know, the last few years that considered that, which in this case, 2012, did consider the use types of this area, or if there isn't anything on file, then we ask for one. So like, the last traffic impact analysis that we requested was when Harrah's proposed to build at their present location.
And even with, and I obviously live in that neighborhood, but the traffic on 33rd and 48th is just, it's difficult those times, but adding more to that, and it's more that's going to be added, I think we really need to take a look at something. I know that field was empty, Jim, but I think it's now getting full, and it's going to get fuller with the, with the arterial, and I just don't know if putting another streetlight on the end of the deal is going to alleviate any of this headache that we've got. I think there are real concerns. I just think pushing a little bit, pushing us into that, you know, we can't, on one hand, say we're, I know housing's an issue, and, but on the other hand, public safety is an issue as well. I would have to probably vote against this item because of, just because of the public
I have a couple of concerns. During these busy hours, it would be, it's virtually impossible to leave from the Maple Park area to the west and turn left. So in order to get anywhere, you've got to come, you've got to turn to the right, go up to the Parkway, and come around. The idea of the kids from the high school cutting through the area on their way home or on their way to school is not good. I understand why they're doing it because the congestion in the 33rd Street, 33rd Avenue and 38th Street during these peak times, it gets to be pretty maddening. I'm one of the guys in the queue that's trying to go to the Y at that point in time of the day, and I see the guys turning right to get into the neighborhood so that they can go through the neighborhood and then get back on 33rd Avenue, and this isn't the kind of neighborhood that we want that kind of traffic in. I am very concerned about the number of additional cars that we're talking about in this area. 120 rooms or 120 doors, times two maybe, times one and a half, call it 300 additional cars coming and going out of this area with one exit, impossible to turn left during peak times. It just doesn't seem right. I don't really know enough about the configuration that is being talked about to know if there's any other possible ways to configure things, but at this point, to me, it doesn't look
Charlie?
I would echo the council members' opinions. I made the mistake of trying to go west on 38th at 3:45 this afternoon, and they were backed up from the light there at 33rd all the way up to the high school entrance, both lanes. Nobody was going anywhere until the light changed. So it's... So it's, it's, something needs to change before they, or maybe along at the same time that they do this, they can come up with another exit and then an entrance. But other than that, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of it.
Councilman?
Yes, I'm going to probably go at it a little bit differently. And that is with the way I understand the construction of this particular project, it's going to be apartment complex, garages, and also parking areas in the area for the apartments. So we have a lot of concrete. The, the, the apartments basically are going to be flat roofed, the way I understand. And I'm definitely not in favor of flat roofed housing. So I'm looking at, at R1, keeping green space, which will take care of, help take care of some of the runoff, some of the waterworks. So I'm looking at concrete compared to green space. And, and right now, green space is winning. The other thing is, is that I haven't got any information from the developer on what his plans are. And I had to go dig some of the stuff up myself. If he wants to make it into an R or into a B2, he should have come in and as far as I'm concerned, give us some information on what his plans are. So with that, I said, I cannot support a B2.
Any other comments from council members? Anyone else to speak against this public hearing?
Good evening. Scott Minkie, 3968 30th Avenue. I'm going to approach the other end of this. There's a time and a place for apartments, housing, whatever. Personally, I don't feel this is the place. My other concern is no one can tell me, will there be a retention pond? Will it be fenced? Will it not be fenced? How big will it be? That retention pond is going to be in my backyard. I don't want any one of my neighbor's kids to drown in there. I don't want one of my grandkids to drown in there. It's like Councilman Schilling said, there's a lot of unknowns here. And I, I struggle with the fact that you people can consciously vote to change a zone when you don't know all the facts. Okay? And I don't know, unlike Ron, you've got flat roofs, that's nine acres. So let's take 120 apartments, 250 storage units, you have all this concrete. So in that nine acres, I'm just going to estimate six acres of that's going to be concrete. So six acres of rainwater is going to run to my backyard and three other peoples. That ditch can't handle what we get now. I don't know if you know it or not, but Maple Park area where I live has two storm drains, one in the cul-de-sac and one on Lost Creek Drive. All of that storm water comes underground, two culverts dump out directly behind my shed. Most neighbors on, in my neighborhood, we're fortunate, we have a garden basement. So we've only had water issues once, which everyone had water issues at that time. You know what I'm talking about? So that's my concern is we're going to, we're going to develop this area, and I'm not against developing in City Columbus, you know? I have nothing against that. In that area, yes. I'm with Ron on the green space because you're going to add all this rainwater and how's that ditch going to handle it? And not only that, but to my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the city owns a portion of that drainage ditch and then it goes on Jim Hellbush's property. So if you're to come in, put a retention pond and you guys take, or the taxpayers to pay the price to get this ditch updated, what happens when it gets to Mr. Hellbush's property? Because currently it's full of trees, it's full of cattails, and we all know what happens with rainwater, trash, trees and cattails. It goes nowhere. So therefore it backs up on my yard and everyone else's. So that's my concern. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone else here to speak?
Hi, I'm Jerry Putnam. I live at 3976 Lost Creek Drive. I own the daycare. After school and in the mornings, it's like a racetrack. And I've called police several times, no response, but they fly through there because they are trying to beat the intersection at Lost Creek School. So anyway, they can get through there and they're not watching for kids out in the street. And that's a curve right there. It's very dangerous. Plus the neighborhood kids that live across the street riding their bikes, scooters, whatever. And in the morning is the same way. And you know when school's out because you can hear it. It's a race outside. So my concern is safety. And if you're going to add apartments, that's that much more traffic flying through there. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy?
I guess my concern also is, is safety. Whether this were to go through at this time or another time, I'm not sure. Maybe we should look at, for the current time, placing some type of speed control device in these neighborhoods such as speed bump or something along those lines. I think that would be something to help deter or at least slow down the individuals that may be flying through the neighborhoods. Might be a, I want to, don't want to say simple fix, but maybe a simple solution to help slow them down.
We had a similar situation in our neighborhood, 31st Street and 39th Avenue. We put a four-way stop in it and it just slowed everything down. It did what it was supposed to do. So there, there are things to do, but I, I think the, the big question is the overall, what do you do? I mean, what's going to, the future is just, we're looking at an old study and it's really hard to say. So, and you know, we want the, the parkway to, to be successful. We want the high school to be successful, but at what cost? I mean, it's, that, that's, that's the real issue here.
I will say that we are, the city of Columbus applied for a Safe Street for All grant and later on in the agenda tonight, you're approving a contract with HDR Engineering and this 33rd Avenue corridor is going to be part of that study. So we are, and we are making improvements at the light, Lost Creek and 33rd, Lost Creek and 48th, Lost Creek and 18th. But just saying that to say that we do recognize that there's a lot of traffic issues. If you want to speak again, please come to the podium, sir.
On the, my name is Keith Evans. On the traffic going north on 33rd Avenue and 48th Street, or 48th Avenue, are those three lanes going out on a northway? Is it a left-hand turn, forward and a right-hand turn?
Will be.
Rick, Rick.
With arrows?
Rick, do you want to address the reconfiguration at 48th and 33rd?
Yeah, so at 48th and 33rd, they'll both be left-hand, dedicated left-hand turn lanes and dedicated and flashing yellow left-hand turn lights when the project's done this summer about those intersections.
There will be three lanes leading the area. That's great.
Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Kelby Herman, K. Herman Development. Answer a few of your questions. As far as the timeline and the planning stages of the project, step one is to work with the planning commission and the city on the zoning so I know that the, the project would be allowed in that location. We have looked at preliminary designs and worked with John Zuingman with advanced engineering and, and had discussions with the city as far as different exits and how many exits they're going to require for the project. The unit, apartment units, we have a design where there would be five buildings and there is a design where there are six buildings, so either 100 or 120 two-bedroom units. Those buildings are currently designed as a two-story building and that building was designed two-story to blend in the neighborhood. I didn't feel it was a good fit to have a three-story apartment building, which has typically been built in Columbus in that location. So the step one was to get the zoning, zoning approved and then move forward with more investment in additional design steps. That location, again, we've, we've talked about traffic. That is an arterial road. It is designed to take additional traffic and that's why we identified this location as being a good spot for multifamily. Again, there would be some kids that would walk to school both ways. It would be good to have housing close to the hospital and other features that are in the northern part of Columbus. We have been working with, with the city and I know John has talked to the city engineer staff about, about drainage issues and that, that parcel has been looked at multiple times by John Zuingman. He was unable to be at the meeting tonight for multiple uses over the years with Jason Schmidt. Single-family housing was brought up. It's just not a cost-effective piece of property to develop for single-family housing due to the, the length east and west and the distance north to south. You can, you can get two rows of housing in there, which it's cost prohibitive to do that light of, of density development on that parcel. So that's where I came up with the idea to have a mixed-use development, items that are both needed in that part of the community, multifamily to service all the workers in that area and kind of a low-impact storage facility. The drainage and the pond will be, you know, that's a city requirement and that's dealt with engineering staff, not at the beginning of the project, but, but as we work through the design. Initially, we look at the acres and the runoff and make sure we have enough green space to accommodate the pond and the potential estimated size of the pond is needed. And we have found that based upon the preliminary calculations, we would have enough to control our retention and do it according to city and state standards. So I'm here to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any, any questions for Mr. Herman?
Well, I have a question, but I'm not sure Mr. Herman's the right one to answer it. Do you know of any other multiple-family homes in that area?
I'm not, I'm not aware. I know there is a, a multifamily project in the design stages, maybe west of that.
Right.
I think maybe the nearest one is, I did one a couple of years ago behind JCPenney. That was a, it was an income-based project. So I am working on the south part of town with, I'm a partner in the Quail Meadows Development, so I am doing single-family housing in, in Columbus as well. And I, I may note that this multifamily project is not an obliter or substandard area and will not be utilizing tough financing. So it is, it is unique in that aspect.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Herman? Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak for this public hearing? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, move the public hearing closed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, ordinance number 25-01, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 25-01 be read by number only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-01 by number only. Any discussion?
Yes.
Seeing, yes?
We're, we're looking at a special use permit to do what?
This is the rezoning.
No, we're not there yet. You're, you're, you're ahead of the agenda.
7B1. Oh, I am ahead of the agenda. I am sorry.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Just to clarify, just to suspend the rules.
Just to suspend the rules for ordinance number 2501. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes to suspend the rules.
Item, or excuse me, ordinance number 25-01.
Mr. Mayor, move the adoption of ordinance number 25-01.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 25-01. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion fails.
Item 7C, public hearing application from K. Herman Development LLC for special use permit to allow convenience storage in a B2 general commercial district zone located at east of 33rd Avenue between 40th and 42nd Street. Gene, I guess since the rezoning wasn't approved, is this, remove this or?
Well, this would be moot because you can't have a special use.
Right, so remove it from the agenda?
But how do we clean it up? Do we take it off the agenda? Do we vote, I mean, do we just go past it or do we remove it?
I would say that you would remove it from the agenda.
So I need a motion to remove.
Motion to remove, please.
Move, we remove it from the agenda, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove public hearing application from K. Herman Development for special use permit. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C1, ordinance number 25-02 for the special use permit, same thing. We need a motion to remove this from the agenda.
Move that this item be removed from the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove item 7C1 from the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. All right, brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A1, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of January 13th, 2025. Item 10A1, Policies and Procedures Manual for the Columbus Community Building. The committee recommends that the report be adopted.
Mr. Mayor, I move the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Take, take a moment, if any of our audience that was here for all that discussion wants to, to leave, don't be embarrassed. You're welcome to be up and leaving and not have to listen to us the rest of this meeting.
Item 10A2, Crisis Communication Plan. The committee recommends this report be adopted.
Mr. Mayor, I move the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B, Public Finance, Judiciary and Personnel Committee of January 14th, 2025. Item 10B1, Municipal Recognition Categories. The committee recommends this report be adopted.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, this, this, sorry, report to be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B2, The Strategic Plan, 2425. The committee recommends that this report be adopted.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, Appointment of Brett Rains to the Downtown Business Improvement District Board to fill the unexpired term of Lindsay Thompson.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the following name to you for appointment to the Business Improvement Board at the January 20, 25 City Council meeting, according to City Council rules. Brett Rains was born and raised in Columbus, Nebraska. He attended Central Community College in Columbus, is a graduate of Leadership Columbus. In 2022, Brett and his wife Marissa purchased ARL Credit Services, Inc., from Rich and Donette Jablonsky. Located in downtown Columbus, it has been rebranded as Columbus Credit Services. Brett and Marissa are blessed to be the parents of two children, Mia and Maverick. They are members of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Brett believes in serving his community, whether that is caring for family, friends, neighbors, or community. He believes that faith, family, and service are his core values, and he finds enjoyment and purpose in volunteering and giving to our community. He truly believes it takes a village. Brett's community involvement includes served as board chair for the Board of Christian Education Emmanuel Lutheran School, Cub Scout Den and PAC Leader PAC 192, baseball coach and board president for the Columbus Outlaws, co-chair Taste of Columbus 2022, member of Surtoma Club, and currently board chair for the Columbus Area Chamber of Commerce. Council members, I'd entertain a motion for this appointment.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passed, and I'd be remiss if I didn't identify Mr. Rains in the audience, and if he'd like to come forward and just say hello. We don't often get visitors when they get appointed, so you're here, I'm going to let you take advantage of saying hello to us.
Hello, council members. I just want to tell you how much I appreciate your belief in me to serve on this board, and I will do it with the best of my abilities.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it.
Item 13B, Appointment of Nicole Lindhorse to the Downtown Business Improvement District Board for a three-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the following name to you for appointment to the Business Improvement Board at the January 20, 2025 City Council meeting, and asks that the two-week waiting period be waived. Nicole Lindhorse was born and raised in Columbus. She graduated from Columbus High, attended Central Community College, and has stayed here for her whole life. She and her husband are members of St. Ezeador Church, and their three children attend school at Columbus SCOTUS. Nicole and her husband Mark are both small-business owners, so improving the community is something that is important to both of them. Mark owns and operates Able, Inc., which is an ag-related business. Nicole owns beautiful Bountyful Wellness Studio, formerly Bountyful Boutique, and is the owner of the new district venue, both located in downtown Columbus. She also owns the House of Color franchise in Columbus and the Sign Gypsies franchise. Nicole feels it's very important to be a part of improving our downtown trackside district and bringing more awareness and people to the area. So she looks forward to being a part of the Business Improvement Board. Council members, I'd entertain a motion for this appointment.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this appointment. Any discussion?
Just for clarity, is this filling another?
No, I was going to say that after you approved it. This will be replacing a longtime downtown businessman and member of the board, Dick Thule. Dick was up for reappointment, and Dick said it was time for somebody else, and so that's, I was going to wait until we were done and announce that, so. All right, we have a motion and a second to fill, to approve this appointment. All those in favor signify by, I'm sorry?
Do you need to include in that motion the waiver of the two-week notice that we talked about at the beginning?
We didn't end the last one. I don't think we ever have.
Can we just attach it to the motion that's already made?
Or whoever made that emotion, whoever made this point? It's in the letter, so we read it, and we're making the appointment based on the letter.
Well, we've done them in the past, I guess.
Yeah, that's how we've done them. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Nicole Lindhorse. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, quote from Snap-on Industrial and the amount of $29,182 for tools and equipment for the central maintenance facility. This is CIP number 25-23.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the quote from Snap-on Tool be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Snap-on Tool. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, quote from Vanwall Equipment Incorporated and the amount of $27,870 for two greens brushes and two greens rollers for the golf department. This is CIP number 25-13 and 25-14.
Mr. Mayor, move for the quote from Vanwall Equipment, for two brushes and two rollers to be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Well, in reading it, it says it's going to improve my putting, so that's why I voted
Was your name in there, or did it just?
Yeah, specifically.
Okay, I just wondered. All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, quote from Nelson Systems Incorporated and the amount of $29,759 for a voice recorder for the Joint Communications Center.
Move that this quote from Nelson Systems be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept this quote. Any discussion?
Is this part of a budget item, or is this new, or is this?
Yes, Rachel, Joint Communications Center, yes, it is part of the budget item. It will be covered 100% by set-aside funding, so wireless surcharge and zero tax dollars.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, quotes from Motorola Solutions and Electronic Engineering and the amount of $13,973 for radio system upgrades for the police department. This is CIP number 21-01.
Mr. Mayor, move that the quotes from Motorola Solutions and Electronic Engineering for radio system upgrades be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this quote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, quote from Jones Automotive and the amount of $30,258 for vehicle, equipment, and installation for the police department. This is CIP number 21-05, 06, and 07.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Jones Automotive for vehicle, equipment, and installation be accepted?
We have a motion and a second to approve this quote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13H, purchase from Enviris Training Solutions and the amount of $96,700 for virtual firearms and de-escalation simulator for the police department. This is CIP number 25-33.
Mr. Mayor, approve that the purchase from Enviris Training Solutions, Inc. for virtual firearms and de-escalation simulator be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this purchase. Any discussion?
Just curious, at some point, would we be able to walk through this demonstration?
I'm sure we'd be able to arrange that.
That'd be great. Take a look at what it actually can do. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13I, change meeting dates and times for the Public Property Safety and Works Committee and the Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move the committee meetings to 5:30 PM on the first and third Monday each month as needed, or change the committee meetings to 4:30 PM.
So what is the will of the council? I would caution, I mean, 5:30 is great if we're always done in 30 minutes, but if you have a council meeting, you really don't want to be pushing your council meeting back.
I think it would be subject to what's on the agenda. If it looked like the agenda was going to be full, we'd probably move it back to 5:00 and I just thought it was a move that would be more productive with our time instead of having two separate dates. You know, we had a lot of times where we didn't have enough for a quorum, so I think if we can have a better use of our time, I think that's what's important.
I would echo what Mr. Jablonsky said.
Many times, we tend to meet in our committee meetings, and then we immediately go to a vote in the council meeting. For example, committee of the whole meeting, we have, and then that item gets on the agenda at the council meeting later that evening. It gives us no time to really cogitate the item after the vote. At any rate, I would prefer to have the 4:30 meeting on the Tuesdays and, or on the Monday on the opposite weeks, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, we could have them at whatever time you all decide, but the item on that committee could then be given to the next council meeting, is I think what you're getting at.
Yes, I'm trying to.
Have some time.
Give a little time between the two meetings. Sometimes that isn't good, but I'd like to see the time in there. And I didn't want to go wait to two weeks.
I totally understand.
As staff, we did have that discussion and said that there is no written rule that says it has to go to the, you know, meeting immediate, the council meeting immediately following the committee meeting, and that doesn't happen right now. Because some things that come to committee are pretty well-done, like tonight, for example. We had the community building policies and the strategic plan. There were no changes brought forward between committee meeting and council meeting. In that case, I think it could go the same night. But in a case where it's maybe an idea or a suggestion from the public that comes to committee, it certainly would not be ready for that night. It would have to be, you know, all the staff would have to do their work and bring it to a future council meeting. So it kind of depends on the item as well.
Well, going back to the policy for the building, I know that there was a lot of work between the time of the committee meeting and tonight when it was finally approved.
Right, and in that case, we would have taken it off the council agenda, right? Or not put it on there? I mean, it's, I'm just saying, I don't think that's a reason not to do it.
Oh, I think moving the time makes all the sense in the world. I think you just want to be comfortable with what you're doing. And is it wise to not have a set time? Because I know most council committee meetings are things we are talking about, but if you're inviting somebody from, let's face it, a lot of consultants and so on come in from Omaha, Lincoln, or out of town, you know, if they're thinking it's 5:30, but then we make it 5, I mean, how does that work? I'm just asking, I don't.
Well, we have to publicize it. It's going to be publicized on the Thursday. They'll know that in advance. But I, you know, as a retired guy, I can come anytime, but I'm worried about the people that are.
I agree.
That work for a living, you know? We've already imposed on their time. Maybe we should hear from them if that's going to work or what they would prefer to do. But I guess, to me, I can show up to 7:30 in the morning, I think. My wife wakes me.
I think we have more of those types, 10 committee of the whole, and that's not set, except when we set it. You know, because we depend that based on how long we think it's going to take. If it's a quick item, we'll set it at 5. If we think it's a longer item, we'll set it to last longer. So we can certainly write this more broadly to be able to set the committee meetings longer. I do not recall in the eight years I've been here that a committee meeting has lasted longer than 30 minutes.
Somebody make a motion. We're putting a lot of effort into changing the time.
Mr. Mayor, I move the committee meetings to be moved to 5:30 PM on the first and third Monday of each month.
As needed.
As needed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the committee hearings from the first, to the first and third Mondays of the month at 5:30, as needed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Second.
I think we got a second.
Oh, I think, I'm sorry, I thought Rich, that's the third. Motion passes.
Item 13J, comments from the mayor and city council members and compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members with comments this evening? The only comment I would have, I was asked to say this last time, and I forgot, so shame on me, but we've been very fortunate not to have Mother Nature dump on us the, yet this year, with any of the white stuff that's been of any consequences. But at some point, that will probably happen, and I'd like the public to recognize we do have some plans and procedures that we have in place. We have a video that they could access and see what we recommend, and it spells out what we, you know, what our city plan is. So again, I'm just trying to put information out that the public is aware that they can educate themselves to some of the things that we'd like them to know about when it comes to snow removal. All right, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R25-08, approving the renewal of the Commercial Operator Agreement with Best Air LLC.
Somebody's got it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-08 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R25-08. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R25-09, approving the contract with Gearing Construction and Ready Mix Company, Incorporated, and the amount of $2,540,815 and 10 cents, and change order number one to decrease the total by $186,152 for a revised contract price of $2,354,662, no, $2,354,662 for concrete paving improvements, 2025, and the 11th Street sidewalk improvements, CDBG23-DTR-003.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for Resolution Number R25-09 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R25-09. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, Resolution Number R25-10, approving the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Incorporated, and the amount of $499,998 for Safe Streets and Roads for All Project, CIP number 25-24.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R25-10 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-10. Any discussion?
Do we have an explanation of the scope?
Yeah, so the Safe Streets for All grant is, it is a, you have to look at the entire community and look at safety and traffic. So as I mentioned earlier, look at that 33rd Avenue corridor. We look at everything around the city of Columbus. And so what it does is it goes in, and there are certain requirements that need to be met as far as counts, as far as safety, crashes, things of that and that nature. And they'll come up with locations of concern, and that's the report that we need to take the next step in trying to get a grant, which would be an implementation grant for some items that you'd like to proceed with.
Will they do visual counts, or will they have electronic counts?
They'll have some electronic counts to be done. Now, those won't be done on every single intersection. Those be done on the high priority ones. I think there's four of them that they call for in the report or in their agreement.
All right, it says we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Do you know when they might start, Rick? I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're scheduled to start as soon as notice proceed is, but they'll probably, it takes a very long time to do this, obviously, and they're hoping to get it done by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you.
We do have a timeline to spend our grant. I think it's worth noting that we got 300,000 of this $500,000 study is a grant that the city received. Okay, now, item 14D, Resolution Number R25-11, adopting the Policies and Procedures Manual for the Columbus Community Building.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-11 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 25-11. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, Resolution Number R25-12, adopting the Crisis Communication Plan for the City of Columbus.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-12 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-12. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14F, Resolution Number R25-13, amending the municipal recognition program for the city of Columbus.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of R25-13. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-13. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned, and while we were waiting for that vote to tabulate, I took a quick look, the end of the first quarter, Notre Dame seven, Ohio State zero.
The resume?